We are here to make it inclusive, to speak to everybody, to make children safe so that they can build the best lives ever, right? That's what school is for. So we should make it... I'm not talking to you.
I would ask that the audience please limit introductions. Sir, would you please limit your introduction?
I would like you to check out the website, the Delmar助助C and see what it is, you know, how things features, and that comes real time, and that's not acceptable, right? You cannot downgrade people, insult teachers. I am a educator of both generations, I stand for teachers and for all students.
Okay, let's take a... All right, we're just gonna take a quick break here. I'm gonna ask again that everyone, audience members, candidates, be respectful of each other. We're not here to have opinions on each other's opinions, we're here to hear everyone's opinion. So if you have comments that you want to share with candidates later on, more than welcome to talk to them after the forum, but please be respectful of this forum and do not interrupt. So next we will move to Ms. Brigantow-Sabowski, ninety seconds.
I don't like to segregate people, whether they be by race or by gender. I've always taught my students that everyone is equal. I treated everyone the same and expected my students to do also. Let us all try to get along and not look at our differences, but look at how we are alike and our common interests.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer, ninety seconds.
I don't pretend to be an expert in this, uh, in this area. If you ask me something on the building condition, I could give you a lot on that, but in this area, I don't claim to be an expert. I'm still trying to learn the difference in the, uh, the pronouns between here and here and all of the transgender pronouns that you use, but I'm always willing to learn. And one thing that I go by is that, uh, our constitution says everybody is created equal. I believe that. We practice it throughout my military career, we practice it down at U M E S, and we practice it in church. All men are created equal. Now, we have guidelines, we don't make these guidelines up, sitting out there at the board. We have guidelines that come down to us from the state and federal government. Do I agree with them? No, I don't. They got a lot of strange ideas that I just don't like, but I think you can just stick to basics. All men are created equal and treat them that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ennis, ninety seconds.
My comment for candidates is that first, can we have schools with different schools? There are microcosms about that topic. We have a number of students in our district that need everyone's support, no matter what they are looking at as far as their gender. We have students transitioning, we have students who are still struggling with understanding what they're doing. We need to treat each one of them equally, we need to treat each one of them with support. They all have a seat at the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ducko, ninety seconds.
It's one thing to say that we need to be inclusive, but in fact, many of these, um, students are marginalized because of their sexual orientation. I want to reiterate something Dr. Arby said. Recently, one of our best teachers at Wyheim, who is a coordinator or sponsor, I'm not sure of the exact title, of the L G B T Q club at that school, and she was identified by name by the St. Lombardo's organization. This puts her at risk for some of these people in our community and elsewhere. So, these marginalized people have to be protected, and I give that teacher a lot of credit for doing this and trying to bring them into the community, giving them a club of their own, and it's a disgrace to call her out by name this way.
Thank you. Mr. Lombardo, ninety seconds.
Excellent question. Everyone, no matter who they are, under the constitution should have equal rights. All men are created equal under God. And everyone that enters this school should be respected, should be included, and to be a part of education, equal access to education, no matter what, no matter who you are, no matter where you're from. However, where the school system crosses the line and goes wrong is when they identify a group, and they give preference, and they promote, and they endorse a certain group, and then requires other children to affirm certain beliefs or to affirm certain behaviors. That's where the school, school, school system crosses the line. And the parents across this county say that is crossing the line, and I would have to agree with them. And so, school is to focus on core subject matter. Academics has nothing to do with someone's sexuality. What someone does behind the scenes in their own bedroom, that is their business, they're always to be respected, always to be nice to people. But, if someone is forced to affirm and accept that, that is not right, in my opinion. And so, we need to be careful where our scope is as a school, and to respect everyone, and never bully anyone, no matter what. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our final but not least candidate, Mr. Brown, you've got ninety seconds.
Wycomico County's all-school system have the task of educating all students as equals, no matter what their race, no matter what their gender. Uh, Wycomico County does a pretty good job. Is it perfect? No. There are always going to be challenges, and in the area where we have to have challenges or where the challenges meet us, we have to meet them head-on and find solutions to make it work. Unfortunately, uh, throughout the county and throughout the world, this has become a hot topic, but we have to confront it, we have to find ways to make it work, and we have to find ways to make all students in each school feel safe in that environment so that they can learn and move on from that point. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next question will come from Mr. Chambers.
This question's for the candidates from District Two. School shootings and more general violence continues to present a problem across the United States. What can Wycomico County do to keep students, teachers, and administrators safe during the school day?
Um, what we have done already, and the seven of us that serve on the board, in the last number of years, all the school vestibules are now secure, you have to check in to get into school, all buildings are air-conditioned, and you say, how does that make it safer? Well, they shouldn't have windows open and doors propped open where people can slide in the side door and start shooting, which has happened in Uvalde and other places. We've accomplished those two things. We also have ten SROs, the deputies. If I'm re-elected and the board supports me, I think we need an SRO in all schools. People say, oh, well, you don't need that in an elementary school. I think in today's time, you need an SRO at every school, if no other reason to send a message to the bad people, we're protecting our students. And so, we need to also continually train our teachers and staff and personnel on safety measures. What happens when there is a school shooting? What happens when someone's loose in the school with a gun? We need to keep doing that, which we're doing. Um, as far as internally, there's also internal safety with students who bully each other and cause problems. We need more mental health people, more social workers, maybe we can get to the bottom of it before it turns into a disaster. But mainly, we need SROs to protect us from the outside people, and there are bad people everywhere, and we have to face that fact. It's among, it's upon us now, it's 2022, we have to do that. We need one in every school. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, ninety seconds.
Yeah, I think it's a sad coincidence that we're having this forum immediately following the school shooting, and we had our first forum immediately following the school shooting. My entire career as a teacher was spent post-Columbine, so I can tell you, as any teacher can tell you, that after a school shooting, I went into my classroom the next day and looked to see what I would do. So I thank the board for making sure that all of our vestibules now are safer. I thank the school board for the fact that teachers in Wycomico County no longer have to leave their classrooms in order to lock their doors. I thank Wycomico County for making sure that we all have air conditioning so that the days I spent at Bennett Middle with all the doors wide open and chicken fans are a thing of the past. I thank them. And yes, I agree that we need to keep our schools safe from outside, but at the same time, we currently have a teacher at one of our schools who suffered from a concussion that she got from a fight inside the building from students. So yes, we, we jump when there's a school shooting to think about that, but it's the day-to-day where we have school fights, where we have threats against teachers, where we have threats against other students, and where we have fights in the schools. And that does require us to start spending some resources in ways that lower those risks. We need to find ways to de-escalate, we need people trained in de-escalation, we need to make sure staff is trained in de-escalation, we need to work better on the management systems of how we move students around the building so that we don't have these groupings where people are more likely to be disgruntled and have fights. We need better health supports for our students in the building because that's where they spend a hundred and eighty days of the year.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next question comes from Mr. Pope.
This question's for the candidates from District Three. What do you think is being done well in Wycomico County public schools, and what would you do to encourage that success?
We'll start with Ms. Biecher, ninety seconds.
Yeah, could you repeat that again?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. It's for District Three. What do you think is being done well in Wycomico County public schools, and what would you do to encourage that success?
I, I think that we have a great vocational studies and industrial arts area. Uh, I think that is, is doing really well, but I do think we need to offer some more options, um, to both males and females, um, expand it, um, and maybe start a little bit earlier, maybe the last year of middle school, so they have a little bit more time, um, to work on that trade. Not all of our children are going to go to college, it's not for everybody. Not everybody is a great student, um, it doesn't appeal to everybody, and a lot of our students are just not financially able. So I think that is a great part of our school system, but I do think it needs to be expanded to offer more to our students. One other thing I think should be added to that, though, is, um, drivers' ed. I really do think that should be brought in to improve the school system. We have so many students in this community that can't afford the $400 to take the class, they don't necessarily have family available to drive them to the class and pick them up. It's my belief that it absolutely helped no one that that was removed from the county school system. So, in addition to the vocational and industrial arts, I say we bring drivers at that.
Thank you. Mr. Arby, ninety seconds.
Yeah, I agree with what Susan said. CTE is a great program. Just to give a statistic, the high school graduation rate in our county is eighty-three percent, whereas the state is eighty-seven. So, we are below the state in terms of high school graduation, but our CTE graduation rate is ninety-seven percent. What we need to do is to invest in a dedicated facility for CTE, start it at the middle school level so that we can produce a lot more tradespeople because these are good-paying jobs. Not everybody has to go to college. Those who go to college, they would find a way, but we can find productive citizens with good, well-paying jobs through the CTE program. Having said that, what else do we do, Bill? The nextion program is a gem. We are going to have a feature in the National Geographic channel about, the Discovery Channel about how good the program is. Every year, we send kids to Ivy League schools, the total number of scholarships that our students get is in multi-million dollars. None of this has been talking, spoken about in the media, right? I'll give an example. Salisbury Middle School had a science expo this spring. We had more parents and students working the, uh, displays rather than the parents actually came to see those displays. That's, that's, uh, that's, that tells you what, how much we actually value education in this county. We need more parental enrollment because the future jobs are in STEM because these are high-paying jobs. You know, we could start coding in, in middle school, and that's what we need to focus on. So we have, we have some excellent STEM programs, we need to expand it. There shouldn't be a tab on the fifty students that we have in the nextion program now, but then anybody and everybody who is able to pick it should be able to do it. We have a lottery. What we can do is, we are not investing in the future.
All right, our next question will come from Mr. Chambers.
Okay, this question's for the large candidates, and it is from the audience, pretty simple. Should the school system implement financial literacy as a graduation requirement?
Mr. Ducko, ninety seconds.
Well, I don't think they should take me ninety seconds to answer that question. I'm going to say absolutely. I mean, the kids come out of school, they don't know how to balance a checkbook, they don't know, uh, anything about the banking system, and they get in big trouble. They get credit cards that they don't pay off, and they end up having outrage. I mean, my kids did this when they got, you know, they went to college, and all of a sudden they were offering, offering these credit cards. Oh, man, this is free money, you know? Uh, yes, absolutely, we need to teach financial literacy to keep these kids from getting into these situations.
Thank you. Mr. Lombardo, ninety seconds.
Yes, uh, financial literacy, K through twelve, is absolutely necessary. Uh, I would like to see it as a graduation requirement. Students that graduate, even start in high school, you know, those credit card mailers come to them, and you can fill this out and have it, and, and yeah, they, they fall victim to it, and before you know it, they're in debt. And so, it's important to equip them to not only understand credit, understand investment, understand how to balance a checkbook, understand how to create a budget, uh, and not fall victim to predatory car loans when they get out because that's another trap that students get sucked into, and also understand their obligation under student loans. A lot of people think, I'm just going to go to school, I'll take out a loan and, and not think anything of the long-term consequences. So it is vital that they are equipped with the necessary life skills to make sound financial decisions in the road ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question comes from, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Ennis, ninety seconds, I apologize.
It's okay. I, I do think it's important that every student be exposed to financial literacy. As far as it being a graduation requirement, I'm not going to go that far, um, because every time you add something else, then you have to take something from the curriculum. You can't keep adding without taking something out. Financial literacy is key. It is crucial for some students to understand that before they get themselves into that credit card yet. And I do believe we should be offering that course for all students. I'm, I'm just not there yet with the graduation requirement. I'm, I'm not quite sure what would we take out of the curriculum, what would we take out of the graduation requirements for this?
Thank you. Next question comes from Mr. Pope.
This question is for the candidates from District Two, also audience question. We have quite a few along this line, um, some of them specifically reference the sixteen-nineteen project, others specifically reference just the teaching of difficult topics. So, uh, how would you, uh, think about or give guidance on the appropriate way to teach difficult issues from the past, including slavery and segregation?
We'll start with Ms. Miller, ninety seconds.
So you're going to ask the math teacher this, right? The state of Maryland provides the content standards that our school systems teach. Wycomico County Board of Education approves the curriculum materials that those teachers use to teach it. I think we can all agree that we need the honest history of the United States to be taught. I think we can all agree that teachers should be politically neutral within the classroom. I think beyond that, it's a distraction from the real problems that we have in our schools. I have been asking since June for a certain board member, I'm not going to say his name, John Palmer, to give me, um, evidence that CRT is in our classrooms, and I have been waiting, tick tock, tick tock, since June for evidence that it is occurring, and I have not gotten it yet. Um, so I have not seen evidence that it's in our schools. Um, Mr. Palmer assures me that he wouldn't vote for it if it came through as curriculum material, so I'm just not sure that it's an actual discussion topic other than a distraction. Um, I would much rather focus on increasing the student, the achievement of our students and making sure that our schools are safe.
Thank you. Mr. Malone, ninety seconds.
Thank you. So, history is fact, we teach the facts of history, and history is in the past, what happened, happened, and we teach that. I know what this question is leading to is, is there CRT in the schools, is it being taught, the sixteen-nineteen project? It's not being taught because we approve the curriculum and we never approve that. But I will say this, if we want our students to be critical thinkers when they graduate from high school, and I know I want mine to, there's nothing wrong with discussing CRT or sixteen-nineteen project. That's different than teaching it. I'm not saying teach it, I'm saying discuss it, get their feelings, their opinions, they watch the news, they hear about this from their family and friends. A good, talented teacher will be able to lead that discussion, not lead them to an opinion or lead them to what they should feel, but teach them how to critically think about these things. If we can't graduate students as critical thinkers, then we should just close the schools and go home, that's a waste of time. We can teach them math, history, and English, we could teach that, but we need critical-thinking students, and in the private sector for forty-three years, I interviewed potential bankers all the time who haven't been able to balance a checkbook and have a master's degree, you ask them a really thought-provoking question and they give you a very strange look. You've got to be able to critically think and survive in the world after you graduate, no matter what you do. So, that's my answer to that question.
Thank you. Our next question comes from Mr. Chambers.
And this, this is for all of you. What is your view on merit pay for teachers? Do you believe in using incentives to attract highly effective teachers or teachers in shortage fields such as math and science?
We'll begin with Mr. Malone, ninety seconds.
Back to you, okay. Um, yeah, I believe in merit pay, also believe in the incentive pay. Again, I've worked in the private sector for forty-three years, and people that perform get paid the best, people that don't, you're paid less, and eventually you weed them out. Incentives for those people that really go above and beyond routinely, you pay the incentives quarterly, annually, whatever. The Board of Education this year, for the first time in history that I know, we had an incentive pay to all staff. It was a retention bonus because we need to keep good employees. But if we want to, again, have the best and brightest teachers who will teach and train and educate and teach critical thinking to the best and brightest students, you got to have the best people, and you have to do merit pay. The best get paid well, the others get paid less, and eventually they go out. Incentives would really make a big mark because those people go above and beyond, like a bonus in a, in a bank where you sell enough loans, you get to another level, you get a bonus. So, we'd have to figure out how it all works, but absolutely, I believe in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, ninety seconds.
So merit pay, um, of course, as a math teacher, I would love to see math teachers paid more. Um, and I would love to see more math teachers being created because they're paying more. The question is, can we find enough by just increasing the pay? Can we retain them by just increasing the pay? I would argue that beyond paying them more, we need to make the atmosphere, which they're teaching better. It doesn't do us any good to hire a new teacher if we can't keep it. If we can't keep the teachers we're hiring, and to my understanding, we've lost some teachers already this year. If we can't keep them, then it doesn't matter what we're paying them, we're going to be turning them over and turning them over and turning them over. So by all means, merit pay, by all means, attract younger teachers, but let's make sure that we're giving them an environment that they're willing to stay in, otherwise it's a waste of money.
Thank you. Ms. Biecher, ninety seconds.
Oh. Just give it, uh, thank you. Yeah, good pay is a great thing, um, money affects people, but I don't think it's enough. I think that we need teachers who love being around kids and that love to teach, that's their passion. Um, so I think we need both, you, you can find people and pay them well that really don't like their job, but they're there for the pay. I don't think that's what we need for our children. Um, they need people to look up to and learn from, and, and people that love being in our school system, that's what our children need. Um, and, and I think that's what we need to concentrate on, how, how do we attract those people, you know, other than just with money.
Thank you. Mr. Arby, ninety seconds.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, merit pay is very important. I think you need to distinguish, uh, the outperformers with a higher pay. That's one way to incentivize and motivate them. Having said that, the current group print does actually increase the base pay to twenty, uh, to sixty thousand dollars by twenty-twenty-five, and then the average increases will be significant. But that's not enough because we are competing with private employers who are going to pay twice as much to, with teachers with the same degree. These are people with, with graduate degrees, they could make twice the pay. So teaching is a calling, so people come to teach because they think they can make a difference, and I think we need to embrace it and run with it. Additionally, you want teachers to be able to do the job. Let me give an example. In a middle school, a teacher is required to, uh, monitor the halls and the bathrooms about eighty minutes a week. That's fine, taken away from planning. Who are the people who are actually assisting the teachers? The instructional assistants. They, these instructional assistants are paid lower than what a fast worker makes. They make the teachers' life much easier because they, they assist the teachers. You need to pay them a living wage for the instructional assistants. So it's just not a merit pay, you, you need to look at the whole structure, compensation structure as, as a whole, and then strategically make sure that we're able to retain and also incentivize and have a mentoring program, bring in more minority teachers, diversify the, the teacher pool so that it reflects the demographics of students.
Thank you. Ms. Brigantow-Sabowski, ninety seconds.
Kids need to be encouraged to be the best that they can be. When I began my career in Delaware, there were no certification requirements. All you needed was a BS, and you didn't have to take any other credits forever if you didn't want to. I went ahead and the district paid for my masters and for my doctorate work, but I was told by other teachers in the district that they resented the fact that I made more money than they did, even though I had worked hard for the masters and my sixty credits beyond the masters. I was also told, why do you do all the extra things you do? You make the rest of us look bad. So we need merit pay, we need something to encourage these teachers to be the best that they can be.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer, ninety seconds.
As a board member, if you look back, you'll find that, uh, I'm probably one of the few candidates that has never been endorsed by the, uh, teachers union, right in Smith? And that reason is because I don't agree with their values, uh, it just doesn't hit me right. We have teachers right now in our school system, they're very, very good, they're excellent, they're afraid to speak out because they know they're going to be retaliated yet, retaliated against. And that's just wrong, it's just wrong. They should be able to speak out. Pay is always a good incentive, but also working conditions is also a good incentive. So we've got to stop this kind of stuff. Pay on the shore, I think we're probably one of the highest right now in our starting salaries, and by twenty-twenty-four, we will meet or probably surpass the sixty thousand dollar starting, starting salary. And I think that's excellent. And you would be surprised, uh, well, I just want to digress one minute. Uh, Ms. Miller wants to keep talking about CRT, well, she would be surprised about how many teachers that I support meet with me in different places around the county to say what is going on with CRT in our schools. And it will be coming out, just be patient, thank you.
Thank you. Our next, uh, Miller, Ms. Ennis, you have ninety seconds.
It's okay, you can skip me if you want to. Um, we have a ten thousand dollar teaching bonus for those teachers who earn a national board teaching certificate. Any teacher who wants to earn that bonus can get that coursework for free. Um, all they have to do is to put in the time to get that, uh, all that coursework finished, submit their paperwork, and they have the opportunity to earn ten thousand dollars more a year. Uh, several years ago, we offered a, the state offered actually, a bonus to teachers working in low-performing schools. Um, we had teachers who were earning, um, additional funds because they were working in specific schools. Imagine that you are a teacher doing the same job in another school and you're not getting that bonus. And so I'd like for you to consider, you know, merit pay, what is it? And so, I'd like for you to consider, you know, merit pay, what is it based on? Incentive, what is it based on? I'm all for hiring incentives. I think, you know, again, we are looking at, you know, those positions that we truly need math teachers, we truly need, you know, all of our teachers, but again, the idea, you have to take a look at, what are you basing your decision on? Who's making that decision that this teacher is going above the other teachers? And what is it doing to the collegial work within the school? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duncan, ninety seconds.
Yes, just to follow up on something the Senator said. Merit pay is difficult. This is not like rewarding a salesman if he sells more full of brushes or something like that. How do you reward merit for arts teachers or reading teachers versus classroom teachers? How do you compare the performance in these different areas? There are some non-academic teachers who do excellent jobs, but it's very hard to evaluate them and compare them to a less than teachers. So, merit pay, I think, is a very difficult thing to do in public schools because you're not comparing apples to apples. I think incentives, Dr. Ennis said, are good, we need teachers. And I also want to add something else. Salaries matter, as Dr. Arby said. We are in competition for teachers. We have a shortage of teachers, we have a shortage of substitutes, we can't get substitutes. Salaries matter. We are in competition with the other schools in the region. Now, I think it was Mr. Palmer said, we're going to be paying sixty thousand dollars for starting teachers by twenty twenty-four. Wow, that's the first time I've heard that. I think we're at fifty-two thousand now. Is that, is that what you said, Mr. Palmer?
Yeah.
Isn't that what you said? The blueprint, you'll find.
It's in the blueprint.
In the blueprint.
What I heard was twenty twenty-four, which surprised me a lot. Blueprint, I think, does say twenty twenty-six, and I hope we can reach that target, and I expect we will.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry. All right. Mr. Lombardo, ninety seconds.
All right. As a business owner, I look at things, I'm a capitalist. As far as how the school system operates, it's moving towards a more of a socialist model where a teacher may have a ration to teach. I believe in a teacher working hard, if a teacher works hard and demonstrates the time and what they put in and pouring out their heart to their students, I believe in incentives. I believe in rewarding good workers. There's a, you talk to a lot of teachers across the county, some of them, I've known teachers that have stayed at school from ten o'clock at night. I mean, they say, I didn't sign up for this for the paycheck, I signed up for the love of the student and for teaching. However, a teacher should be compensated for what they do, absolutely. And so, I want to encourage that, but what you see come out a lot in the influence of the unions, oh, let's just throw money at things, let's throw money at things. There's way more to the picture than money. We need safe, a safe environment for our teachers. We need to know that, we want them to get up in the morning and be excited about coming to school and teaching. And right now, we don't have that. And we need to get that environment safe, we need to encourage our teachers, we need to be there for them. And, you know, there's a lot of discussion on this, more than can be answered in ninety seconds, but I absolutely support incentivizing our teachers and growing together. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, ninety seconds.
We live in a competitive society, and in order to maintain and recruit the best possible workforce, we have to pay them well. Incentives are good. If you take a teacher, as many of you have in your workplace, you have individuals that are good workers, and you have some that are better than some of the best. The best workers do a great job, and the good workers look at them, and they find out that they're getting rewards, they're going to work harder so that they can get the rewards. So, I think it's a good thing as a stepping stone to encourage all teachers to move forward and so that they can also get those incentives. But in our society today, we've got to do it. It's no question about it. Think about all the individuals that we've lost to other counties, right here in Maryland and across the bridge, because the pay is higher, because they do pay incentives. So, I think Wycomico County would be prudent in doing so.
Thank you. And Mr. Angel, ninety seconds, please.
Yeah, what I'm going to say is going to sound very similar to what Alan just said. By definitely, we need incentivized teachers who do go above and beyond, and we should definitely make sure that we recognize that in their, at least see that in their pay tax. However, I think when it comes to teacher retention, raising the pay won't really keep a teacher if the environment isn't well, so we have to look into the environment. We all, we can raise the pay and raise the sixty thousand on the blueprint calls board, but we also have to look into the environment, we can see why they're leaving, look to have a holistic solution to the issue. So, not only raising the pay and incentivizing for the teachers to do well and go above and beyond, so that teachers do tutoring and one-to-one with students, stuff like that, they should get incentivized financially, but we have to also look in the environment as to why they're leaving.
Thank you. Our next question comes from Mr. Pope.
Candidates, this is a question for District Four and Five. Are you satisfied with the provision of special education services in county schools? Why or why not? And if you wanted to make a change, what would that be?
We'll start with Ms. Brigam Sobowski, ninety seconds.
Before I answer the question, I'd like to read from the blueprint for Maryland's future, by July the first, twenty twenty-six, starting teachers' salary must be sixty thousand dollars. If the, every candidate should, this should be your bible, this is what you're going to be adhering to for the next ten years. We are so fortunate in Wycomico County to have a special ed supervisor by the name of Bonnie Wallston. She is a caring person, and all of the people who work under her have the same caring feeling that she does for her students. Is everything perfect? Bonnie will be the first to tell you that it is not. But our special ed department, especially with our summer programs for the students, they are very, very caring and loving teachers. I have had the privilege of going into many classrooms where there are special ed students being mainstream. Some of them have one-on-ones, they have a person with them all day long, they have medical problems, but yet they are in a caring, loving atmosphere. And I think we should be very proud in Wycomico County of our special education program.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer, ninety seconds.
I guess I'll be difficult one again. I'm not pleased, entirely pleased, with going on in special ed. And I have a long history of this. You see, I had a special ed child, and whenever we went to school, it was always a us against them type of situation in these meetings, and I didn't like it. We always had to prove our point, but then having somebody who wasn't totally qualified or said he overqualified was more qualified than a doctor's, he would rule, and it wasn't to our advantage. So, for a while, we took our kids out of school. My dining room became grade school. I launched it for three years. We then put them into private school, and we returned them to public school because I didn't want them to, in high school, because I didn't want them to miss out on proms, football, baseball, and things like that. I think we can do a lot more. This feeling of us against them has got to stop. It's got to be, what does this student need and how do we do it? The bickering back and forth has got to stop. The funding, whatever, people are saying, well, we don't, can't fund that, I don't want to hear. You know, we can fund other things. If we can fund pickleball, we can fund special education for children, and I'm a firm believer in that. So, I believe we have, I believe we're moving in the right direction, but I believe we have an opportunity to make some big changes in special education. Thank you.
Thank you.
A question from the candidates in District One, this is an audience question. Can you articulate your view of the most impactful pedagogical strategies for student engagement and learning?
We'll start with Mr. Brown, ninety seconds.
I think, to begin with, we've got to have parent involvement. If we get our parents involved from early on, as I indicated earlier, pre-K and kindergarten, we get them hooked, and being a part of the process, I think, will achieve the goals that we're aiming for. One of the things that I think that happens far too often is that many students are left not being supervised, and when they come to school, the teacher has the idea or has a job of not only teaching, but also parenting, and that presents a big problem, and it's a learning block to begin with. So, in order for us to move forward and provide an enjoyable, rewarding day for each one of these students, we've got to start and get more parent involvement in with our kids. The thing that I am most pleased about here recently is that we've gotten a number of our community partners involved in the school system, not only the businesses, but also the faith-based areas, and this has helped immensely in helping kids after school and helping them to bridge that gap and liking. We've lost a lot over the last couple of years with the pandemic, and the reason because of that is because these students who were left home alone, were not being supervised, did not get the understanding of the value that many students got when their parents were there to protect them and to keep them on task. And I look at that from my own son and daughter-in-law and my two grandsons. Fortunately, my daughter-in-law was able to stay home with her kids and kept them on task. But you talk about a fifteen-year-old and a fourteen-year-old and having them stay on task, it's a little bit, it's a monumental task.
Thank you.
And not only that, pre-kindergarten and first grade, it's awful.
Mr. Angelo, ninety seconds.
Yeah, I saw you make sure, I really want to make sure the question correctly. You said, what was the most impactful thing for student achievement? I think I understood that, I think I understood the question.
Can you articulate your view of the most impactful pedagogical strategies for student engagement and learning?
Yeah, I definitely think having smaller class sizes is definitely a good thing to have. We can definitely try to do that, as right now, as with our perspective, our schools, it's kind of impossible to stretch a class if you don't have an extra classroom. So, I think, as from my personal experience, smaller classrooms are definitely the most impactful thing for student achievement. So, yeah, I think that would be my answer, I think having, trying to expand, trying to make sure we have more classes that are smaller, I think probably the most impactful we can do.
Thank you. Our next question comes from Mr. Pope.
This question is specifically for Mr. Lombardo. We did get versions of this from the audience, but we had prepared one, so I'm just going to read that. A recent article in Elmarva Now reports on your participation in a series of classes offered by the Institute on the Constitution, specifically a class called the Maryland Constitution Course. The course was taught by David Whitney, a former chaplain for the League of the South, a group that has been identified by the Southern Poverty Law Center as an extremely racist hate group. Why did you attend a course taught by a racist? And did you learn policies or practices that you would like to bring to Wycomico County schools that would help prepare students for college and career success?
Mr. Lombardo, ninety seconds.
Well, that's a loaded question, but I can say one thing, fake news. I took that class, learned the Constitution, US Constitution and Maryland Constitution, and it was an excellent course. The instructor was absolutely phenomenal. There wasn't a hint of racism taught by that instructor. The book that was used for that instruction in that class was absolutely great, the detail was phenomenal. I've read the Constitution as a high school student. I've never gotten into the in-depth workings of the Constitution, it was absolutely amazing. I would absolutely take the course again. As far as whatever news source put that out, it was the most pathetic journalism I've ever seen. It had no supporting evidence, it was an accusation, and it is complete folly. And so, as far as the instruction in our schools, I think that everybody should learn the Constitution as far as our students go. Everyone here who's been sworn into office, they swear on the Constitution, they should know what it says, because if they don't know what it says and they don't understand it, it is perjured. Did you ever think of that? So, it is important to me to understand the Constitution and to know my role in government, and it is to protect everyone's God-given rights. Thank you.
Our next question comes from Mr. Chambers.
This is the final question, it's from candidates for District Three. Our schools already hold PTA meetings and other events. Have community involvement committees send weekly messages to parents via phone and email? How do you propose to increase community involvement in schools, and what do you hope to achieve through this involvement?
We'll start with Mr. Arby. Ninety seconds.
So, yesterday, I was at the Saltsburg Middle School PTA at six p.m., five p.m. There were more teachers than parents actually attending the PTA. That's a disappointment. Seventy percent of the kids' time is actually spent at home. Parental involvement is the single largest dedicated for students of this. So, we need more parents to be involved, but that also entails why aren't parents being there? We have a huge section of the population, we have a poverty rate that's forty percent lower than the state, we have a significant minority population, we have thirty-six languages being spoken in our county, ten percent of our students are actually foreign-born, who are non-native English speakers. Maybe their parents are working two or three jobs, they don't have the time to do it. We need to have alternate ways to get them engaged, maybe meet them on weekends, sometimes that will work, maybe go to their neighborhoods and then probably to a townhouse. We need to make it easy for them to participate, we cannot wait for them to come to us, that's one way to do it. I don't know how many people have access to technology, they don't have internet, maybe they may not read the emails, maybe they don't understand the language, even though it's bilingual or triennial, it's things like that. So, we need to find creative ways to actually reach to our parents to get them involved because having parents engaged will ensure that the students are successful, and we need to have community partners, faith-based organizations, all kinds. It takes a village to raise a child, and I truly believe that, because we will be failing our children if we do not have, give them a proper and great education.
Thank you. Ms. B. Chet, ninety seconds.
Communication is key, particularly between the parents and the board, but also between the teachers and the board. It's something that definitely needs to be addressed and worked on. Currently, the parents in this county have really been shut down by the board's new policy on speaking at a board meeting. Teachers are afraid to speak up for fear of retaliation. I would love to see this changed, love to see it addressed. Maybe possibly with smaller meetings outside of the big board meetings, smaller meetings with the board and teachers, smaller meetings with the board and parents. But you can't shut parents out and expect them to be willing to communicate or to be able to communicate with school.
Thank you. So, as was mentioned, that was our final question for the candidates, but of course, we're going to allow them some time to wrap things up here, kind of give you all a little outro to leave you with before you look at the polls on November eighth. So, I believe with the general questions, the first one started Mr. Brown, then we went to Mr. Angelo, so that means that we will start with Mr. Malone. So, you'll get ninety seconds for your closing statement, again, just whatever you'd like to give to the voters on the way out.
Okay, thank you very much. So, I want to be reelected to the board because pre-pandemic, we were improving graduation rates. Student assessments were not great, but they were better than they are now. We were close to a public-private partnership on an art school. We had a lot of things in play with Dr. Angela Superintendent and her team that all got put on hold, it was two years fighting the war of the pandemic. I want to be a part of that next wave with Dr. Stauffer and six other folks who will join me on the board to improve graduation rates again, get student achievement assessments up again, make teachers feel welcome and wanted in our schools, make the schools even safer than we've made them already. I want to be a part of that. One thing that everyone needs to remember is, public education is the biggest economic driver of any district, county, or area. I don't think people realize that, it's a huge economic driver. So, if we want this economy in this county to grow, we have to make sure public education grows and does well. So, I want to be a part of that boat that moves forward, that ship that rolls on, we So I want to be a part of that vote that moves forward, that ship that rolls on. I want to be a part of that, and those are the things that we'll do if I'm re-elected.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, ninety seconds.
Sorry. I've been all over District Two since I filed to run for office. I've knocked on probably over fifteen hundred doors from Tyuskin to Mardella to Sharp Town, Heblin, Eden, Allen, Quantico, Fruitland, and my part of Salisbury. And I've spoken to a lot of parents who felt neglected. The west side of town often does. I hope that I can bring my experience, having taught on the west side of town. I started at Northwestern and understand that feeling. My husband graduated from Mardella, so I understand that feeling. I hope I can bring my experience, having taught in this county, having worked with the families of Wycomico County, having built relationships with those families and with those students, having always strived for high achievement with my students. I hope I can bring that knowledge and that experience to the board because we do need people who've had more recent experience in the classrooms of Wycomico County. I have a great respect for Mr. Malone. I just think my skill set is different. Yes, we need bankers, but I think we also need people who have been in the classrooms of Wycomico County. And I have done that. I had high standards when I taught. I will continue to have high standards as your board member. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Beecham, thirty seconds.
Again, Susan Beecham, running for District Three. Since making the decision to run for a school board seat, I cannot begin to tell you the number of phone calls that I had received from parents and teachers alike. And the message was the same from every single one of them. And that is, our school system is in trouble. Our children are in trouble. The philosophy that we keep hearing is our hands are tied, there's nothing we can do. That is not working anymore for the parents of this county. Change needs to be made. Our children need to start thriving again. It's imperative. I have fresh eyes, I have a fresh perspective. You know, the board of the bank is not all bankers. It's people from all different aspects of life to offer different opinions and perspective. I have a different perspective. I ask you all to vote for change. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Arby, ninety seconds.
First, I want to thank everybody for your spending your time here because you care about education. And I want to thank every single candidate in the panel because it takes a lot of time, treasure, and talent away from your family to run for a position like this. This is my first parade of public service because I think education, education is fundamentally transformative to any community. We are hurting. We are the, we are the second lowest-funded county in the state of Maryland. We are the poorest county, second poorest county in the wealthiest state of the nation. This is unacceptable. We, as a county, come together and invest in education, you can see results. And we are not doing it. The maintenance of effort which the county council is doing is unacceptable. We are not planning for the future. We need to respect the teachers because they are our neighbors, people whom we go to church with, the kids actually play ball with. We need to respect them. We cannot delegate and insult teachers whatsoever. Stand up for the teachers, invest in education. It takes every one of us to do our best. Whether I win or lose, I will support Susan. I will support every candidate because it takes the whole of us to move forward and we need to do it. Because the nation's future and security depends on a strong public education. And that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Brittany Adams of Balski, ninety seconds.
I have already proven myself as a leader in Wycomico County, and I take my election to the V O E very seriously. Last year, I attended one hundred and thirteen meetings and events associated with Wycomico County Public Schools. Sixty-six of these were during the day. A person with a full-time job, as my opponent, would need to ask permission from his employer sixty-six times in order to fulfill his V O E duties. If you have a family, four children and a wife, for example, as does my opponent, forty-seven times, he would need to check with his family to see if he could, if there was a conflict. By the way, where is my opponent? He's not here. He ran against me four years ago. In these two cycles, there have been two TV interviews, nine forums, and he hasn't shown up for any of them. However, he did manage to take three days off to do the early voting for the Democrat booth. I understand from his employer, he's taking five days off to manage the booth for early voting. He can take time to manage a political booth, but he cannot take time to meet the voters and answer the questions about what he would do if he were a V O E member.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer, ninety seconds.
Ninety seconds to say everything. Okay. I'd just like to maybe comment on a couple of things that I've heard going on during this reading. Literacy, I hear a lot on literacy, financial literacy. I'd ask the superintendent to get together a list of where and how much financial literacy is taught in our schools and I've asked for it to be put on the, on our website. I don't know how far along that is, but you are going to be amazed at how much time is devoted to financial literacy. Sometimes it's just hard being people to retain some things, if you remember back to your high school days. But I'm telling you, it is being done. I've always been deep into funding way back. And that's back when we used to have lunches that were paid for by my turn to cook and all that. None of that's being done now. School boardings within the cafeteria, and it's really good. So funding is one of my chief things. Art, county council, and our legislators have given me, or when I ask for something, everything that I have wanted, I have been able to get so far. Look at our buildings, no more chicken fans throughout schools. We've got good buildings, number one in the state, and it's an upheaval. These buildings were done excellent. I looked at the new schools and the, was that ten of them, was that it?
That was it, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
All right. Ms. Ennis, ninety seconds.
I'm going to end, I'm going to start this, the last forum, the same way that I started the first forum. And that is to ask you what it is that you want. What do you want for the students of Wycomico County? What do you want for the parents of those students, those families? What do you want for the teachers, the administrators of Wycomico County Public Schools? With early voting starting Thursday, you have a choice. You have a choice between leadership, you have a choice between soundbites. Are you looking for someone that has the background and the leadership skills? Or are you looking for someone with a soundbite? We have real issues in our schools. The behavior of our students is creating a mental health crisis, not only for some of the other students, but also for our teachers. We have teachers who are struggling themselves because of the behavior of some of our students. We have an achievement gap. We have a low performance rate in reading and math that NAEP has finally decided they need to bring to the forefront with the national media. We need to get our families back into our schools. We need to get our communities joining together with our schools. We cannot afford to graduate students in Wycomico County that do not have the necessary skills in math, reading, science, and social studies. And I will tell you that our teachers are not groomers. Our teachers are not indoctrinating your students. Our teachers want to teach. Thank you.
Mr. Dunhill, ninety seconds.
So why did I decide to do this? At my age, we need it. But I decided to do this because I was upset about what I was hearing locally and nationally about groups and individuals demonizing teachers, as Mrs. Ennis just said, calling them groomers, indoctrinated. This is nonsense. Teachers become teachers for a lot of different reasons, many because they love kids, or they love teaching, or they have a love of learning. Myself, I became a teacher when I was sixty years old in public schools. I did it because I have a feeling for kids who are learning English as a second language because my grandmother never learned English. So there are a lot of different reasons, but they don't become teachers because they want to groom or indoctrinate children. That is nonsense. The other thing that was upsetting me is these groups were turning cards against teachers. In order for a school to be successful, parents and teachers have to collaborate. You cannot have a successful school if you have parents and groups calling teachers by names and, you know, antagonizing them from the parents. It's terrible.
Thank you. Mr. Lamardo, ninety seconds.
Excuses for excuses.
Sit down.
The status quo has failed our children. It is a fact.
Please allow him to speak.
It is a fact, and everybody knows it. It is time to come to academic proficiency. We need to focus on our students. We cannot continue this way. Failure, failure at every angle. School improvement has been a failure. Those who are in charge of school improvement has been a failure. We can't continue. We need to retool. Those who have been part of the system for so long, they're out of touch with the citizens. They don't even know what they're doing anymore. We need to return to traditional teaching. Common Core has failed our children, and they just keep beating the dead horse, pushing it down the dolly, just thinking it just might live. It's not, it's dead. We need to retool. We need to return to traditional teaching. Our kids need to learn, they need to read and write, they need to write on paper instead of these computers that are dumbing them down. Computers are a good supplement in the classroom, but not a replacement for pencil and paper. Financial literacy, we absolutely have to do this. And so school safety, another thing, absolutely a high priority. We can't play anymore, folks. This is serious, and I am ready, I am committed, I will work circles around these people. It is time to get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, ninety seconds.
As I indicated earlier, I received my early education from the Wycomico County Public Schools. That education gave me the foundation to go on to college and have a successful career in teaching and moving through the ranks in the last twelve years as assistant superintendent for the school system here. Is it a perfect school system? Of course not. We have challenges every day, and it's up to us together to meet those challenges, to come up to a working solution so that we can have an enjoyable, rewarding day for every student that comes through the doors. I have a number of friends, including my wife and my son, who received their foundation of education here in Wycomico County, relatives. And like many of you, you were able to achieve the goals that you have so far because many of you were educated here in Wycomico County and educated elsewhere. So what I would like to do is to continue to work on the Board of Education so that I may give back to the community that has done so much for me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the speakers will give us one minute, ninety seconds.
I would like to thank Pace and the Greater Salisbury Committee for hosting this forum. I would like to thank everyone who came out here tonight. Educated voters are the best ever voters, so thank you for taking the time to bring word with the candidates. I just wanted to let you guys know, I didn't even teach myself. I'm a first-generation Haitian American, and I'm a graduate of Wy High. I graduated not that long ago, I graduated in twenty twenty-one. So I do have a very forested perspective of what's going on in the school system, and I really want to bring that to the board. And I also wanted to let you guys also know, I've also been endorsed by groups all over the political spectrum, not only for the Smite My Platform, which you can read on my website, lukenzla.com, but also for the effort I've put into this campaign. I don't know how many doors I've knocked on, I've kind of lost count now. I have to cry when I knock on the door because I'm the only candidate who's ever even went to the neighborhood to talk to them, let them know that I'm running for office. I have knocked on doors in the hood, the suburbs, and off the roads, let's travel to District One. I really want to make sure we have an active leader who is going to be a loud advocate on behalf of the Black, the Latino, and the immigrant community, all of whom I'm a part of. If you want that, I hope that when you vote, either vote early, which starts in two days, or you can vote on election day on November eighth. If you want an active, responsive leader, please vote Lukenzla. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes our Wycomico County Board of Education Candidate Forum. I want to thank the audience again for attending tonight. This is an important issue you're voting on. And again, thank you to all of our candidates for sharing your insights and your platforms with us tonight. And last but not least, thank you to Pace at Salisbury University, the Greater Salisbury Committee, and Salisbury Area Kinder Partners.